Good Lord, I thank you for this day and all the beautiful weather and uh what I thank you most of all for your savior. I mean our savior down in the cross. Well, I thank you for this town that I'm in and we don't have to worry as much about what's going on outside us, but I pray that our country right now, Lord, that uh will look to you for the answers because without you we're nothing. And we really need you right now. All these same questions, your name, amen.
Ladies and gentlemen, I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Good to see everyone out today. It's good to be back in the, in the council chambers. Uh we're setting separations over along with the CDC's ruling. Um and it, it is good to be back though. Good to be able to see everybody and talk and and share a conversation and be able to see who you're talking to instead of just showing up on. So, um we'll go ahead and get started and uh um I'll just start on my stuff, what I have on my list. Uh I've got a sewer agreement that we've been talking about for a long time, uh that has been worked out and it's not final, but it's uh it's something that y'all need to look at tonight. Maybe if we have a break or something to look at. It's a sewer, sewer use agreement uh between us and section doesn't, or section, I guess it's a town section. It, I used to call it section of water, but it's really the town section because this is our section. Um and what that does is it covers the uh, the sewer usage for five piles and the college. Is basically where all this is coming from. So anyway, it's a, just a sewer agreement and everybody needs to look at it. And they've got a copy of it so they can look at it, their board can look at it and see if they find something wrong or if we find something wrong, we'll make some corrections to it. Am I saying that?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Are we increasing anything, decreasing it or anything?
We're increasing the price per gallon, yes.
How much?
It's from a lot since I'm.
Is the gallons running about more for them, for them?
They run over part of the time uh in one town and stay under in the, into the other town. Uh the price is going from three nineteen and, and it's going from three nineteen to five twenty-five per thousand gallons. And that's based off of what the sewer, all the different parts of the wastewater treatment plan added in is how this calculation came up. USDA worked on it, uh our accountant has worked on it and that is the price. This has not been changed in uh since thirteen or fourteen. So that's the reason it's got behind. It should have already been changed a little bit at the time it ain't much, but.
That's when we found the agreement with five as well too.
Uh the.
That was a previous agreement before section bought that one.
Yes, it was with five back then, but now, now it's all transferred over to the right council. So anyway, this is an agreement y'all need to look at. And let's talk about it.
Let me ask you another question.
Okay.
Have the board agreed to this yet? I know that I haven't met yet. You know, they're.
I think they've agreed yet.
No, we sent it to their lawyer, Jack Livingston. He said they would consider it their next meeting, which I don't know. If they use.
I think they're monthly.
Yeah, one of the things they requested in here, uh their total capacity was a hundred and twenty, uh hundred and twenty thousand gallons a day. Uh they wanted to go up to like a hundred and forty uh to have a little bit of growth. And so that, and this is, this is gonna be uh, you know, like, since we're dealing with section, the town section though. This is not like sixty down at five, it's sixty over here, it's a few more feet, so it's limited time.
I'll bring that up for you.
Okay. Which y'all need to look at, need to read over.
Are you only just to look over my proposed plan?
Well, if y'all are good with it, then we can move forward. We may have to do some adjusting with them, but we, uh at least we get started, you know, trying to get going.
For which side plan we both plan on?
It is, it is and, and so, but I was trying, I, you know, when we talked about it earlier, uh we were trying to get USDA involved and uh and this baby involved with uh, with the accounting side to see exactly where the price per gallons needs to be. And that's where, that's when we came up with that, that price per gallon. Price per thousand gallons, not per gallon. Uh the other thing I have is back a few months ago, we put on hold the paving project for Church Street, Grounds Street and part of North Side Drive. Um it's up to y'all if you wanna go ahead and do that. We will put that out to bid. Um.
I'll make it.
We, we can run in the paper tomorrow or this week. And then, and then we'll open bids June eighteenth at one o'clock here in the council chambers. And we'll be, we'll be set to do that paving. And it needs it really badly. Church Street went up to White Street, it's really, really low. So that will be something else that needs to be brought up.
Be nice if they can fix that little hump right there.
We're.
That's just part of human nature, it's been there my whole life.
What are you talking about?
Close to Dr. Anderson or Dr. Hable's place.
Dr. Anderson, Dr. Hable. Well, we're gonna smooth that out a little bit. We're gonna grind it and try to smooth out some of those real bad holes and stuff.
You have to grind it like a bucket of.
Yeah.
All some of these bad holes and sewer black a long time ago. So we're gonna, we've looked at all the sewer lines and all of them.
I got a question. Are we gonna, is this gonna be one thing, one group together and have bid on it, one?
Yes. One company like will bid on that to uh as a, as a whole project.
Right, as a whole project. Well, I was thinking about if we, if we break that up and make it a lower amount, or somebody like a local contractor, can you like, was that a, that's probably a legal bond? Could we, just different people?
They have to be state certified.
If you're using, if you're using taxpayers' money, then you have to do that.
They have to be bonded.
Now, if you break it down enough that it gets below fifty thousand.
I understand that three months, but I.
If you break it, yeah, if you break it below fifty thousand, you could do some stuff like that.
You speak out.
But you're.
There's good options, but.
Yeah, they got lots of just.
I'm talking about like, that's so easy.
Not that.
They earn you money, they make you money, they're, they're lasses. Well, if you got those guys to come in.
Hey guys.
I would have nine nights.
Can I explain?
Okay.
I did that for four years. That's it. The way the state works is if you got any state or federal money over the city, that you have to follow what they call specs of state of armor rule. And you can't put just any kind of mix on the road and say, well, I paid this for forty thousand dollars. Still that mix has to be tested and you have to be certified technician testing it. And you have to pass all the specs. To put it down because you spend entire dollars a month. It's not your driveway or your business you pay. It's the state road with the state money and, or whatever money it is. You have to have a certified mix to put it down. So the local people here, none of them's been tested by state. They're not certified.
Who buy them outside pay?
They do outside payment for popular, driveways, whatever. They cannot put it on the road.
I don't, but that's.
Because you're spending tax dollar a month.
Well, wait then, Ricky, we've had this discussion, you've talked about it, it piles, I paid Robert O'Barker with local contractor, right?
He used wire grass.
Well, you're saying that they got, they're bonded through the state, by paying, paying you guys their bonds to the state, why, why don't we?
We're arguing over something different. We're not talking about bonded. We're not talking about uh certification of, you can come and work. We're talking about whatever they use to put it on the road, it has to be state certified.
They take them core samples of everything that they put out there, have to take core samples as they put it down and have it tested to make sure. Well, the state can come out and certify. That's the state that did that.
What?
Oh.
They can't afford it. These local, these local people cannot afford it because it requires a different type of saddle where they put the asphalt in. It has to be certified by EPA and these local contractor or local.
Well, we can't use that in use. I mean, I know that, they're trying to, you're.
Unless, unless it's certified, unless it's certified.
Well, and, and some of these guys, some of these local guys will get uh certification through somebody else and they'll pave under somebody else's.
Yes.
Well, my best.
And that's what they do sometimes. And they're okay to bid on this through that other contractor. Yeah, they're, I mean, they can bid on stuff like that. As long as they bid through a, a contractor that's got the right license.
Well, I'm for breaking it up.
Yeah.
Before you try this, before you use wire grass, it looks like mad luck.
Yeah. Well, one of the.
But now, you don't have to do that. You can refuse the first, we have the first refusal. So we don't have to accept their bid. If they have low bid, we don't have to accept their bid. We can go to the next one. And, and so that gives us some flexibility. You don't have to accept that. I'm not, I'm not that much. You don't have to accept. I think somebody was telling me about that the other day, somebody can't, you don't have to accept that.
The longer time the price is so low, he can hardly figure out to do it.
I want to understand, we got anything to learn, boy, just back in Florida water because I got my mom.
Oh, I see.
I know, I know. I, I think.
I'm just looking for new solutions.
Well, they're, they're, they're new solutions coming because uh they're uh starting a sand pit stuff up at Silvani. And they're gonna have real growl and stuff that they use. I think that's Whittaker's, ain't it, man?
I think it is.
Yeah. Whittaker and, and I think they're putting that in up there, so that'll be more competitive once they get that up.
We've got rates this year, we've got rates, Whittaker, uh Wiregrass, uh Good Hope. These are all the people that they can bet on it and they're certified by state.
I mean, we've got like, I mean, we've got a couple of these local guys in here, mine can even hear all the lines, but they're getting into it.
Yes.
What new?
Yeah, they're talking.
We're new competition. They have to be certified.
Okay. Uh anyway, we will note on that, put it out for you. If, if it's, if y'all want to put it out for bid. Uh of course, we had another flood damage area uh last week. Got five inches of rain, washed out a couple of culverts that we hadn't got uh the asphalt back on. So anyway, along with that, of course, this is, the asphalt was put in there before, but uh you know, the total would be probably to fix all these culverts back. Which we've done, got them patched back in it where we can use them, so the streets are open. But I'm just saying that it's probably gonna be around twenty-two thousand. Kind of, we do the headwalls, we do the, the paving back, we uh extended this cupboard size a little bit bigger uh to match the uh amount of acreage that's going to the, that's flowing through these pipes. We upgraded the size of the pipes to match the amount of acreage. And so that was something that we've started doing on all of them.
I'll bring that up.
Okay. Uh the next thing is sanitation and this is a good thing, uh cost a little bit, but it's a good thing. Um to purchase twenty four yard uh dumpsters. We are, we're running out of dumpsters.
That's a good thing.
And uh I think it was eleven thousand, it's on here, eleven thousand exactly, somewhere around eleven thousand. But that's a, that's a whole load of four yards in for about eleven thousand dollars. And so we need, we need those because we're running out.
That actually sounds cheaper than what we was doing.
Well, if you get that, if you mix them with eight yards, it gets on the, but this is just four yards, because we're out of four yards is what we're out of. So that's, that's the things that I have and so we'll move down the line, Marshall.
I don't know.
Ricky? I'm just going around so I can see, I'll look at my page. So I'm just gonna go around, so.
Uh that's a couple, two, three things. First of all, I'd like to donate, bring to y'all tonight to donate to each chamber that commerce to, where they can do advertising for our Freedom Fund. Uh it's hot with Sandy about that, so I'd like y'all to consider us giving them a thousand dollars to do advertising at their discretion tonight. Another thing I had, Mayor, the uh potholes, although we're, we're getting some potholes back around. Uh I got some complaints down around on, I believe it's Thompson, go to the side, beefy taters. Uh and the, the county does an outstanding job on that because of the, the truck that they have that actually vacuums the water out of the hole. And lately, there's been a lot of water in the holes. So it actually vacuums it out and uh, and they put tire in there and gravel it back in. I think we've done some overgrown rainbows, been there for three years. It's amazing that uh, but I'd like for us to see about getting them back out here and going over all of our strips again and getting all of our potholes.
Why don't we just say all the street and that's the Thompson Road? That way they can go to all of them.
That's, that's what we used to do is we'd write up a list of where we think to go and we'd go all over town to them, so.
Well, I think Ricky normally does that. I think he gets.
He does.
And do that, have every, everybody.
The, the problem we've had is lately we can't get the county out here because all this water damage we've had over the last two, three months is put them way behind.
Now, local people can do this.
Yeah.
If you want. If you want to pay them.
Uh I hope that's a possibility. We could use a, a asphalt.
They can come and fix the potholes, they're local. You don't have to be a sewer certified.
And we might have to do something like that if they're, if they're willing to help us fix some of them.
Oh.
Well, I saw my watch, Baytown said, you know, uh smaller, come in.
Does Watts do that?
No.
I doubt it.
Why don't we write the list and let them just go around and make a price like?
Would you say about getting Ricky to make a list of all those?
Yeah, yeah, I need you to get a list.
The other one, uh.
What you need to do is get the list and.
Yeah, I know we've got drainage issues all over town.
It's quite yardage. I put it on there. Go ahead, Ricky.
I'm gonna wait till you get done.
I'm done.
Okay. Uh other thing is the, we, there's a besides pothole, there are place over on Fourth Avenue. I know we got drains all over town, uh problem, issues. Uh of course, I mean, we have rainfall that we had the other night, walked four and a half, five inches and a couple layers. We don't have problems. But there's a issue over on Fourth Avenue. We've done a lot of infrastructure over there and replaced the tiles and fixed the covers. But over at sixty-six Fourth Avenue, uh would you get them to check that? There's water standing in that ditch there and it's causing mosquitoes and stuff. Like you said something to me about it, I think it was Studders, your Friday, when I told her, I talked to you about it, the council about it. And I know right now it's, everybody's tied up because of all the rainfall we have had. But if you get them, somebody to look at that, that'd be good. And that's all I, except for, I'd like to, while I get my moment, I'd like if you give us an update. Will we actually stand on getting our library back open? Uh or City Hall back open as well as uh our court systems back open? When are we looking to hopefully get some of all that backed up and running? I know county is hoping there to back up. Uh when are we anticipating that we might?
We were gonna open the City Hall yesterday, today, but construction's still going on and it's hard to walk down through the hall right now with construction going on. He said he thought he would be done where we could get back in there and back to normal by Wednesday. So we're.
By Wednesday.
Yes.
Okay.
The, the library, we were gonna open it Wednesday, Monday, today. Um but we really need screens up and the guy we called about the screens is gonna be a few days before we can get some screens up. Where we have people like behind, sort of like we did in the, in the annex here. Uh you know, where you got a protected area in front of you when you're uh handling, handling books and stuff. And so for their safety and the public's safety, uh as soon as we get that, we'll open it. And it might be in the next week that we get that done.
So we're close to having.
We're close to having it all opened back up, yes. Agribusiness Center open, they could open right now. Uh the Tom Bell Center's planning on opening. Tom Bell Center was one of those places that uh, you know, it's uh, uh you know, a lot of people that come to that is, is uh, you know, might be elderly people or whatever. And, and we, we were just kinda holding it off till the first of July, uh just for the safety of the people that's there. Uh the only thing I know of that's gonna be in the Tom Bell Center before then will be the uh, uh Judge Osborne is having a training for the election, the twenty.
I think if it was the twenty-third, it's gonna be virtual.
Okay. All right. Well, I knew he had talked to us about using it and I told him he couldn't because that would be something different. Yes. So if that kinda answers some of your questions.
So you think all the next week or so, then we're gonna wait?
I think, I think this week at City Hall and, I don't know, we may have to put up the shower curtain or something down to library contemporary.
The court, they will up this month?
They what?
The court will.
The courts, oh, what did we, what did I say the other day? We, we went over that the other day. Uh Kami and I did. Sixteenth will be the first one. Then we'll have court, the sixteenth, twenty-third and thirty.
Of July?
No, two, two. That's, that's just uh.
So that covers the City Hall, that covers the library, covers the courts. So we're pretty much gonna have, is there anything else that we're not gonna have to open?
Well, we just discussed a few minutes ago, we're heading opening the uh, the playgrounds. So we're gonna do that Wednesday. Um I don't go anything. Am I missing something?
No, we're, we're.
No, that's really nice. We're pretty well. I mean, we've been trying to open it back up this, you know.
Smoothed.
Smoothed and.
Smoothed, huh?
Yeah, and, and to get it back to open it up, you know, in a reasonable time, it's like uh, keep people safe too. And it's not just us, the, the workers, but it's the people outside of this. And so uh, you know, the citizens are ready to come in to do what they. All right.
That's all I have.
Good. Here we go. Good.
We're actually kinda getting back to normal on our routine. As far as good parking, ready, the pool open today. And we did set a guideline of seventy-five people max capacity there. We've got the six-foot social distance with the chairs. Of course, normally we always have fifteen-minute breaks, so every hour we took the breaks out. We rotate our lifeguards every twenty minutes to a station and that eliminates the lines that you've got for people that are conjuring together at the concession stand. I was up there a lot today and worked fine and I said there were no, no issues and it was right at seven people today, so it was. Farmer's Market opens Thursday. Same thing as that, all of our vendors spots are set on ten-foot sections, so we're gonna do that. We don't have basically one way in, one way out to try to eliminate as much as we can as far as people standing on top of each other. So vendors can open it. They're set up at three. Farmer's Market opens at four. Pee Wee Football signups, June the eighth and the ninth. They're from five P M to seven P M to fill the drinks. Seventy-five dollar sign-up fee plus twenty-five if you didn't play last year, so that will finish your jersey. And if you didn't play last year as well, you'll need to bring a copy of your birth certificate. And Wednesday, the third, we're planning on reopening everything at the park. That'll give our crew tomorrow, they can do up there, go ahead and do their sanitizing, this and that. And we're gonna try to set it up where Chris does sanitizing once a day. When he clocks in in the morning, he clocks in at the shop, he'll go straight to the park, do the sanitizing and doing by his business.
Okay. The one at the field runs, so.
Now, if we're opening one, we're gonna, we're gonna go.
Yes.
So.
We see vendors, uh. Vendors, you all blue, huh?
And that, another thing too about the park.
Eight-what?
Yeah, the thing about the park also, we'll have signs made for anybody that's not comfortable with coming through the park or what have you. It's a must. You bring your own wipes, you bring your own hand sanitizer, this or that, because there won't be anything down there. We'll sanitize it once a day. So if you're not comfortable with it, you need to bring your own stuff and wipe it down, whatever you play on.
We're gonna spray it down everywhere.
We'll spray it down everywhere.
Sounds good.
And that's all I get?
Ricky?
I don't have any, honey.
Good. No one is.
I'm gonna spend.
Brazil?
Police are doing good.
There you go. All right, Brazil.
Uh first of all, we need to go to executive session tonight after the test, we need uh a potential litigation that we discuss. And uh we moved it last week on a special session that we're gonna open up the Freedom Fest on the twenty-seventh, so this is a good girl. And uh that's all I have. And what I was gonna say, well, the girl, I am gonna interrupt Ricky about the patching. You can get the local uh contractor if they want to do the patching. They can better, the important to do is you need to come up with naming streets and the size of the potholes. And based on the size of the potholes, it's the square yard, the square feet, whatever you're gonna do there. And that way everybody knows what they expect.
Yep.
Like on Thompson Road, if they go look at it, you need to have five hundred square feet, thousand square feet, whatever it is, market. Give it all the contractors a copy of it, let them know better and they can patch it. If they move on, they can pull it up.
All right.
All good?
Police Park, good?
All good.
Good. I figured you're just here representing Police Park.
Yes, sir. You're here, you know?
Good. Basically.
Yes.
There you go. With.
First, let's do the fire department, the uh, fire college burner, be at fire department in the, the week of June the fifteenth. So uh be having the foster departments throughout the county there, possibly some fire two boys, maybe some of those Texas kids. Possibly be there to go through it and shut some of their trains. Everything going well?
Sure.
Well, we didn't hear that. Are they just pushed back open, so we can remember they?
Did you? Okay. Well, I didn't know. I knew we talked about it, but I didn't know if you was doing it or not.
Well, we taped everything off to where they had to stay a safe distance from the front end. Um computers, we moved everything six feet apart, took out the ones in the twenty. Um today we have about forty-seven people come through, but we've limited ten at a time. Everybody was really great and stable. We cleaned out as soon as they landed, walked their computer down, walked the doors down, so.
Sounds like you got it going on.
We need some police.
Thank you.
We can just continue and.
Basically.
We've got the four o'clock, so the last one.
There you go.
I think it is.
Sounds good. I knew we talked about opening that day and then uh, when I talked to the guy about the, you know, the protective part, he said, well, I'm gonna go open it like it is built. So I didn't know. So I did goodbye with.
And we did cancel our summary, but we've, that's there down, but we're not gonna do a big advance at the Tom Bell Center. We just didn't build there with any way to keep duty six feet from our kids separated safely in that one room. So we did catch a little big advance.
Sounds good. So Rick, what do you have?
I've read up.
I've read up. What? Sandy?
Great thanks, Daddy. Cambridge, just great to see our businesses open back up.
It is.
Really, really appreciative of that. Hope people be patient and understanding of all the guidelines that these businesses have evolved.
How'd it come along with the vendors and stuff for the Freedom Fund?
I haven't started on yet. I'm sorry. It's gonna, I contacted all of them. I've got several that's not gonna be able to participate this year, uh but I've got a lot that are. That's gonna be more, I'm waiting to hear back from.
I love them.
I think the governor's posting a house, another fresh comment this week, Mayor.
That's when I heard what they.
Maybe leave some more.
Yeah.
It'd be good.
I think just start to see the tension and start to ease up.
Well, I've been posting on Facebook and on our website, you know, that we are having it and trying to get everybody to. And I know Sandy's getting the signs reworked, so I'm gonna be getting the signs up.
Yeah. Oh. The uh, our marshal, how about the department of Public Health, you know, I talked about that the other day on the Friday meeting about, you know, some of the guidelines that we had to go through, some of the rules we had to jump through, all that kinda stuff. Well, since then, we've got another, another email from them and it, and it, and it changed it. Uh really, all we have to do is put in, um and then uh we have to make sure that we, we're kinda govern, you know, where we at least push out the information that you gotta distance and you gotta. You know, we at least push out the information that you gotta distance and you gotta sanitize and you, you gotta do all that stuff. We got announced at the, at the Freedom Fest, we got put up signs and we gotta kinda, you know, make sure all that's put out to the people that's, that's coming. So, um, we went ahead and, and I signed that, I signed that document, got it sent back to the, to them. Uh, it actually goes to the fireworks people. The fireworks people does our, our permit for the fireworks, they always do. And so it went to them and so they're working on, because they have a plot. They had it plotted out exactly where the fireworks are shot, where the people's at, where all the buildings are at, they have to have all that for their permit. So that is all already in their hands, so hopefully everything will go good and we'll get our permit on time and everything will be good, so.
Plus the timeframe will get your permit. Once you submit it, the firm will, it's not, it'll be paid.
Most of the time they don't take it, a week or so, a week or so. Most of the time they put in for it, uh, you know, the month of the, the.
Well, I feel close to fireworks, so I just didn't know.
Oh, yeah, we're, we're, we should be good, we should. We'll know, okay?
No, we're wearing off the clothes.
Right, running a lot. Okay, uh, we'll take that, about thirteen minutes.